I'd like to call the August 11th meeting of the school committee to order. Danvers Public Schools is a dynamic community of independent learners dedicated to respect, responsibility, creativity, and the pursuit of academic and personal excellence. This meeting is being broadcast on Danvers Community Access Television. And if anyone watching is recording this, would you please let us know? Let's begin with items of interest to the superintendent. Does anyone have anything to, uh, to offer? What they like to speak about? Begin with items of interest.
Is this, um, where I would give a CPAC update?
Um, not just yet.
Do Julie, I'm gonna try to put you in, uh, right when Christina finishes her spot.
So I'd like to take note of something that, um, the superintendent shared with us. I was very pleased to see that we have received, or we've been selected to receive, um, the early, um, literacy tutoring, uh, high dosage, early literacy, uh, tutoring through D E S I. Uh, the focus on really promoting literacy is with priority given to grade one. I was very happy to see that we got that. Cause that kind of has been, uh, that kind of goes to what we've been talking about. Driving the, uh, literacy of our, our young learners. So thanks for that, Dan.
Absolutely. Through the chair, if it's okay, um, at the conclusion of, uh, Kristen Anderson's update or entry, uh, Julia Pasternak is on. I was gonna give a brief update on that, uh, cause that is something.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Anything else? All right, let's move on. Information from the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. I'll share my screen. We put together some slides. Uh, we have a variety of items, uh, tonight to cover. Hopefully this will good. Okay, just, uh, just quickly, I'll do an overview of a personnel update with more detail in September. Once we finalize our hiring, uh, student services will be up tonight. Christina Ryan is here to talk about her extended year program. Uh, and that's where we'll put the CPAC, uh, update in there as well tonight. Uh, and then Kristen Anderson, our assistant superintendent will provide her entry findings. And then Julie will pop in and talk about our early literacy tutoring. And then Pam Crum is on to talk about, um, the format. We'd like to move forward with our budget presentations. And then we have the update from the, uh, school committee retreats. So I'll begin so quickly, it's been a, a very busy summer, um, as always. You know, we have retirements, we have those who may move away, leave the district for various reasons. And, you know, the hiring that we've done to this point includes through the spring. So we've brought aboard Kristen and, uh, Mr. Strauss, Alan Strauss, the high school. Uh, we've brought three team chairs, which we'll talk more about in September. We're very happy about that as a piece to move our student services forward. A service desk analyst, um, we brought aboard two support positions, uh, through data processing and instructional assistant. They've been great in really helping streamline our data flow. Uh, we've brought aboard a number of, uh, unit As, we call them, whether it's teachers, some, uh, one-year leaves that we're filling, um, two school psychologists, which I'll talk more about in September. But an opportunity for us to upgrade and really improve some programming at Thorpe and at the middle school and instructional assistants and all told, uh, we're about where we were last year, uh, with the same amount of hires. Um, nothing really looking there, uh, because we've added a few that we really needed for this particular year to support our programming. Uh, we also have a position change, Mr. DeMarwell, he's now the, uh, secondary director of curriculum. And then moving on, you know, in terms of open positions, uh, where we had a, our assistant director, student service at the secondary level has, is moving on. And we're just about ready to finalize, uh, a hire there with, that will be announced. Um, we are looking, we have an eighth grade special education teacher need, we're very close, uh, ready to offer and the same with the language-based teacher as well. Uh, that might be closed as of today. Um, instructional assistants, we're, we're closing the gap on some of those. And, uh, general cafeteria workers. So, you know, we're about where we were last year in terms of the hiring, in terms of bringing people aboard. And, you know, we have two weeks to go before our staff reports and students are here September 2nd. So we're very confident that we are in a good place and we'll be ready to open the doors. So I don't know if any of the committee has any questions. Okay, great. I'll move forward. And like I said, I'll present the more detailed and introduce some of the new members, uh, particularly the, um, at this student service level in September. Um, uh, Kristen, uh, Christina Ryan, I'm sorry. If she's here, I'd like her to come on and give an update in terms of our extended school year programming, which we're very proud of, uh, another successful summer. And it's a great program that we're very proud of. So Christine, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. And with me tonight, I have Bethany Stengas, who is our E S Y coordinator, who would like to give an update on our staffing patterns for the summer.
All right, perfect. Can everyone hear me? All right. So like Christina said, I am Bethany Stengas. I have been the extended school year coordinator for about the past nine years. Um, each year is a bit different, so I'll give you guys a quick rundown of how this year went. Overall, we had a very successful program. Um, so our program this year ran from July 7th to August 7th. It is a Monday through Thursday program with nothing happening on Fridays. Um, programming for students in the preschool through grade five was held at Smith School, while the middle and the high school programs took place at the Danvers High School. All of our related service and academic instruction for our extended school year program were provided at Smith School. A snapshot of the students who attended our program. Overall, we recommended 270 students to our program for the summer. Of those students, 12% were preschool age, 68% were elementary age, and 20% were secondary age. In terms of the service breakdown, 47% of our students were recommended for full day programming. So that is something that would be held Monday through Thursday from nine to 12. 27% of our students were recommended for part-time programming. So something that didn't necessarily occur daily, maybe one or two days a week, but was for that three-hour stretch. And then 26% of our students were recommended for drop-in services such as academic support, speech therapy, occupational or physical therapy, what have you. In terms of what we offered for programming, we had a few different full-time programs. We did have a preschool and elementary moderate and severe learning centers. We had our elementary therapeutic learning center, our elementary language-based learning disability center, our middle school severe learning center and our high school life skills program. And like I said, those were all the programs that ran Monday through Thursday for multiple hours a day. We had our part-time program and those were social skills and the preschool program, which each student attended one to two days a week. And then we had our drop-in service, which was a weekly appointment or a bi-weekly appointment. And that was things like academics such as reading, writing, or math, our related services such as speech, OT and PT, and then also our middle school social skills was also a drop-in service. In terms of student attendance, approximately 75% of the students recommended for extended school year services did attend in some capacity this summer. We definitely had much greater attendance in the preschool and, um, primary areas as opposed to the secondary was definitely where our attendance was lacking a little bit. Um, to just give you guys an idea of the staffing required to run our summer program, we did hire a total of 81 staff members for our extended school year program. That included myself as the coordinator, 15 special educators. We had two social workers, a reading specialist, two B C B As, seven behavior technicians, five related service providers, two nurses, an administrative assistant. And without our lovely I As, we had almost 50 of them we couldn't have put together. So that is just a brief rundown of what our summer entailed. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Sounds like you were busy.
Very busy.
And I don't know if Christina has anything to add on that.
I was just gonna say thank you, Bethany, for that update. I would say the one piece that we're really investigating is although 75% of our students attended, we're really curious about what 25% of our population did not attend and really looking towards, are there certain areas that we really need to look at? Because we staff for the program that we plan to run. And so if there are students who year after year do not attend, that's something we need to look at for future programming.
And, and I do wanna say that we've had great collaboration with our transportation department. The, the transportation improved, uh, there were a number of adjustments that took place. I had the opportunity to visit the Smith, uh, location, um, and just a wonderful program. And, and I do see our high school as our office to locate in the high school. So all know, I think it was a very successful summer. Should be very proud of the work.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Julie, you're up now with the CPAC update.
Hi, everyone. My name's Julie DeFilippo, um, and I'm from the Danvers CPAC. I hope everyone is having a nice summer. Um, we've been really busy. Uh, mostly our goal for the summer was connecting with families and the community and spreading awareness about, you, that we are up and going. Um, so we have had sensory tents at all the Falcon Fest events, including last night's, um, fireworks. Uh, we partnered with, um, We Rock the Spectrum Foundation and we were able to have, you know, correct, two large tents. Um, and, you know, some families said to us, we weren't, we probably wouldn't have been able to come or even just like stay and make it if we didn't have this break. Um, it was very quiet in the tent and had all sort of the items that, you know, uh, were really helpful. So it was a great opportunity. We really are grateful to Danvers Falcon Fest for inviting us to come. Um, otherwise, uh, you'll be hearing soon, um, hopefully in September about the survey that we put out, um, we've analyzed the results and, you know, we're going through and finalizing some of the findings. And our board met for a strategic planning meeting and we used all that feedback to kind of look in the air ahead and, and the things that we wanna do and the things that, um, families asked us to do. We have also been really busy at, um, our, with the Apple, uh, award that we've been given, uh, along with, um, the Danvers Public Schools to, uh, from the Federation for Children with Special Needs to, um, sort of collaborate and, and learn around how we can all, uh, work together to improve special education. Um, we are really grateful to all our members of our team. Um, they participated every Tuesday night for I think like six weeks in a virtual training. Um, and so, uh, Christina Ryan and Angelique DeCosta were a part of that. Um, two members of the Accessibility Commission, Amy Valenquez and Mara Kaufman. Um, and, uh, Sean Dougherty from the school committee was there and, and represented, uh, you all, your folks all really well. So, um, we're wrapping that up and kind of looking to, now that we have that background, what does it look like going forward? I'll say lastly, um, we updated some pretty big updates to our website and just wanted to call attention to any families that are watching. Um, the resources page has really, uh, been strengthened. Um, not only sort of in our local community, but I think the questions that we get asked more often is how do I find this certain provider? So we've given some tips and guidance around, you know, search engines and how to navigate that process. And hopefully that will be helpful to families. Um, and I think, you know, generally we, we were really grateful to, to Bethany and Christina, who invited us to the E S Y program last week. And we were there in the mornings and greeting families, um, trying to make those connections. And, um, you know, we're just really looking forward to, to building, um, some community going forward.
Julie, thank you so much for your efforts and, um, I know you're very active. Your group was teaming very active over the summer. Um, and look forward to, I know we shared some open house dates and we'll give some more updates in, in September. And I'm looking forward to the, uh, additions to the update for myself, the superintendent's update. My first one will go out on the 22nd of August. Um, so thank you again for all the efforts and, um, we're just very appreciative of all that you do to bring our families closer together.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Julie.
Okay. Thank you, Bethany. Thank you, Christina. We appreciate the, the summer, uh, programming. It was awesome. We're gonna move on to our next piece. If I can get to my spot, okay. And we have Kristen Anderson, our assistant superintendent who took over July 1 and has hit the ground running. And she put together her entry findings. And then also too, she's gonna talk a little bit about the data presentations moving forward to school committee to inform our community about our student achievements. So Kristen, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
I am so happy to be here. Thank you for hiring me, all of you, school committee members. And, uh, I have really enjoyed the last six weeks working with all the administrators here and, um, the parents and getting to know everybody. So I'm, I'm very, very excited to be here. Um, so I wanted to make my entry findings kind of interactive. So if you could just advance the slides actually pretty fast, Dan. I, um, met with a lot of people coming in. So over 40, um, DPS educators, I analyzed all the student data that I could get my hands on in the, um, DC portal. Um, I reviewed the culture surveys, I, um, read and watched the local news. I examined reports and audits. And so from all of that, I pulled it together to, um, if you're familiar with David Letterman's top 10 lists, um, that's in the Wayback Machine. Some people don't even know who David Letterman is, I know. Um, so we're gonna, uh, count down to number one. So number 10 is that students are on solid ground academically. Um, what you see on the graphs on the bottom is the MCAST scores. Um, and you can see that, um, on all of these measures, uh, listed there, uh, the state average for academic achievement in, uh, advanced and meets expectation categories is about 41%. Uh, and Danvers is at about, uh, 43% in 2024. So we don't have the totals for 2025 just yet, but we'll, we'll have them about in a month. But we're at about average right now. Next slide. So, uh, similarly, not just looking at academic achievement, but looking at growth, um, we're at about average as well. So by definition, the state of Massachusetts is at a 50% growth. Um, and, and you can see those different measures were about 47, 48, 41, depending on what the measure is. These are not just academic, this is also attendance and graduation rates and so forth. So next slide, please. So a lot of this is, uh, a lot of the success is due to the excellent work that's been done on curriculum and making sure that it's aligned to the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. Um, so examples of this, our fish tank reading was really, uh, recently adopted at the elementary level, open side, uh, at middle school science and so forth. Um, this work will continue and in the past, it's, um, really been supported by lots of great grants, um, from the One Eight Foundation, um, that sponsored Project Lead the Way and so forth from D E S I. So we're excited to apply for a lot more grants to support that work. So next slide, please. So, um, within the strategic plan, subgroups of students are a priority. So there are gaps between the general population and then some, um, subgroups of population like students who qualify as low income or special needs or students of color. So we, um, are going to work on those, um, as we have done in the past. Um, and the system we use to work on that is the next slide. And I'm happy to say that there are lots of good pieces of a multi-tiered system of support in place. This is the system where you identify learning gaps for each individual student who's below benchmark. And then you give them small group instruction with certified staff to get them back up to, um, the general population and even beyond. So along with that, next slide is our positive behavior supports. Lots of good work has been done in this room. So that's to get, uh, students' behavior and their social emotional, um, learning really up to par. And so a lot of great work already happening, um, in the schools in that area. Number four, next slide is that in the, in the past couple of years, the student services department has really been strengthened with heart and with strategy. So we look forward to a great partnership there. The next slide is about communication. So there's already a lot of good communication, but that is a pillar, the third pillar of the strategic plan, as you'll see. And, um, that will continue growth in, uh, strong communication, particularly with families. Coming to Danvers after being in, in some high achieving districts, I was very happy to see that the professional development system that is offered for educators is literally second to none. It is the best system I've ever seen, um, and we will continue all the pillars of that system. And then lastly, top 10, uh, number one is that the community is really committed to a sense of belonging and wellbeing among our students, among our staff, among the families. And you just see that a million ways. There's a new, um, wayfinder curriculum that's been established. Uh, the Danvers Cares, the HOG Talks, so we're really, really excited about that. So as you can see, next slide, please, there's a lot of positive to build on. Um, and so our goal in the, um, five years of the strategic plan is pretty auspicious. It's to make 10% growth in every area. So 10% growth, um, in, uh, academics and social emotional and attendance and behavior. So, and I can talk a little bit about how that's measured on the next slide. So, um, about three times a year, the assistant superintendent usually comes to the school committee and gives an update. And I just wanted to tell you a little bit, uh, about what that's gonna look like, um, from me. As I am a trained statistician, so that's my background. Um, we will give you updates across all measures, MCAST, the AP test, the DIBBLES reading scores, I R E T, I C L math scores, students' grades. Um, and we're gonna look at them, um, both student achievements, so just raw achievement, where are they? Um, and then also how much growth have individual students made? And I wanna see 10% improvement on both of those over the next five years. Um, and so we're gonna, uh, compare kind of our current students against state averages and national averages. State averages are generally higher than the national averages. Um, and then something that I like to do is take a basket. And then something that I like to do is take a basket of 20 districts that I compare us with, who are the same as us socio-economically. So that, you'll see that as well. We'll examine student score presently about against where they were in the past. So you can see the value added of a Danvers education. And then lastly, all of this data that I'm talking about is going to be housed in a new data warehouse called Panorama. And over in the side, you'll see an image, there's going to be four thermometers that you could just click on and see how we're doing academically, how we're doing in attendance, how we're doing in student behavior, and how we're doing in life skills, which is their social emotional skills. And that is the end of that. Next slide, please. So this is just a fun picture from our summer retreat with all the administrators. We had the great fortune to be over at St. John's and they treated us brilliantly. Lots of great ideas were had in that group. So you can see we're very happy. So with that, any questions about anything I just said very quickly?
I have one, Kristin. A question was raised in one of the Superintendent Advisory Committee meetings by a parent in regards to Panorama, the data warehouse that you're going to use. We've already discussed them, I think, for the public. Could you just briefly talk about how you vetted them and that it's, you know, the issue of privacy and student protection has been taken into consideration?
Oh yeah, thank you for raising that because I really want everyone to know that Panorama has passed the Student Data Privacy Act, so it's all set in that. It's FERPA safe, HIPAA safe. So we really looked into that before we put any student data in, in there. So thank you for asking that question.
Appreciate it.
Josh, did you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Shannon, if it's okay, I have a question.
Absolutely.
So the Panorama, will the School Committee and parents have access to this?
Nope, not yet. Right now, we're just building it out. It's really, at this point, going to be for the administrators to guide where instruction is going in their individual schools. And then teachers will have access just to their classes.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Yeah, no, I mean, this sounds, this sounds great. I appreciate the deep dive into this.
Thanks.
I have a question if I could, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Kristin, thanks for this information. Can you talk a little more about how you'll measure the social emotional learning piece?
Yeah, so yeah, social emotional is measured in two ways, really. Part of it is self-reporting. So we ask students how they're doing on the, what are called the Castle Five Competencies. So you know, the first is how are students able to name their own emotions? Second is how are they able to manage their emotions? The third is how are they able to name and recognize other people's emotions? And then how are they able to reach out and interact with other people? Meaning, are they able to make friends? Are they able to resolve conflicts? And then the last Castle area is students' ability to solve problems. So you can really see that in like our health education and so forth. So in all of that, we measure in two ways. One is we have the students self-assessed through surveys. And you'll see that in our new Wayfinder curriculum. And then we also have students assessed by their teachers. So you'll see that on the progress reports, the report cards. Did that answer your question, Eric?
It does. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Kristin.
Sure. And I think we have, the next slide is Julie telling us a little bit more about that early literacy grant.
And I'm not sure that the slide made it in the deck, Kristin.
Okay.
But Julie's aboard, so she can start.
Sure. Kristin, if you refresh, it might be there. I don't know.
Okay, I think this is Dan's version. Yep.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, as Mr. Shannon referenced earlier, last week, we were excited to find out that we were awarded a literacy tutoring grant through DESI. And we applied last spring for this grant. And as Mr. Shannon referenced, this, the goal of this grant, so DESI is partnering with Amplify, which is a company that we actually utilize for our literacy data. We also utilize them for our science curriculum, but they offer one-on-one tutoring services that are virtual and one-on-one with students. This will be done during the school day. We were excited to be awarded 41 seats for first graders. And as I know, you've heard me talk about before, the importance of really having our K-1 students leaving on track with their reading and their early literacy skills. And so the focus of this grant is purely on our first grade students. We were awarded 41 students. So after we do our fall screening data, which we do every fall, we will identify any first grade students who are below or well below benchmark. And we will reach out to those families and those students will qualify for this additional tutoring support that we receive through the grant. We have 41 seats. That is based on our number of, we had to submit our kindergarten, our end of kindergarten data for these rising first grade students. Our end of kindergarten data had 83% of our kindergarten students leaving kindergarten at or above benchmark. And so that leaves approximately 37 students in our rising first grade class who did not meet benchmark across the five schools. So we will screen students again in the fall. But again, I was happy with that 41 seat number because knowing that we have 37 kids leaving kindergarten, we have a little bit of extra room to play with, with the 41 seats. So we will be identifying the students who are eligible at the beginning of first grade. We'll be reaching out to families so that they can agree to opt their child into this additional tutoring. This, what I want to be clear about is this will not replace our literacy instruction or our literacy intervention and prevention programming that we have worked so hard to build. This would be in addition to that. And the reason I'm excited about that is that if we can really double, triple dip these first graders and leave that whole first grade cohort ready to roll into second grade, that will be a great trajectory to set forward into upper elementary. And I had another person ask me today, how much is this grant worth? And so it doesn't have a numerical number associated with it. However, I was able to figure out from the Amplify website if we were paying for this tutoring service, what that would cost. And then times the 41 seats that we have across a school year is just shy of $200,000. It was $199,000 something, something. So the grant, you know, we'll have some logistics to work out with providing students with this, connecting with families, making sure all the logistics work out. But I think we're really excited about that extra, extra dose in first grade and really strengthening that first grade cohort that came out of kindergarten pretty strong with 83% of them at or above benchmark. If we can leave first grade 95% or higher, we are golden headed into second grade and above. So we are excited to get the grant. And we will continue to update you as usual on our reading data as it progresses through the year.
That was excellent news, Julie. I was really happy to see that because we all, we all know that, you know, being able to read for understanding is just going to help performance in the classroom or any, or any of the, the metrics that we, we use to, or Kristin's actually committed to using to show growth. How do you, how are you identifying the students for this?
Yep. So as part of the grant, so DESI, I'm meeting today was with DESI and Amplify. So we have to use our DIBELS data in the fall to identify any students who are well below. We'll start with students who are well below in first grade. And hopefully that's not more than 41 of them. Offer it to families and we want to try to fill those 41 seats. So if we fill all of them with students who are identified as well below, that's great. If we have some more seats, we'll go into students who are below. So we'll start with the neediest students. And then again, at our regular benchmark periods, so in the middle of the year, so 12 weeks in, we reassess students, as you know, in the middle of the year. And then those seat, those 41 seats may go to different students in the second, in the second trimester. So each cycle will be 12 weeks. So students will be identified from, you know, September to December. And then we reevaluate at the beginning of January. We will identify which 41 students will qualify based on the DIBELS data, which could be some of the same students or some students may not receive it anymore and some new students may hop on. But again, it will be database decision-making with the support and communication with families.
Will we pull in students from, say, grade two if we don't have enough in grade one to fill those seats?
That's a great question. So if, if I've identified and all the first graders are covered, then I am allowed to use those other seats for any students K to three.
Great. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Julie, and thank you very much, Kristin. Look forward to, you know, in our discussions, we've met with, with the chairman and Kristin, just about Kristin's style of presenting the data. And we look forward to being able to present some very clear data throughout the year of student achievement. Next, I would like to bring Pam Crum into the, the room. We had some discussions and actually I have to give Pam Crum a lot of credit for many things, but recently discussing how can we present budget information to the School Committee in a manner that is beyond just reading off the report that we've provided every month. And Pam has, has some great ideas. Again, we met with, with the chair and Pam and Kristin sat down. And it's, it's quite simple. She wants to put this together where it's, it's timely, but really being able to do some deep dives into areas. And I'm going to turn this over to her because I think I'm talking way too much as usual. So Pam, if you can join us here?
Sure, sure. So the, the recommendations that I would propose came out of the annual institute that I attended in May for the Massachusetts School Business Officials. They had a session specifically about budget reports to school committees. And this is a, the presentation was led in part, one of the two presenters was Tracy Novak, who works with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. So this is a large, in large part based on their recommendations. I don't want to lean too heavily into the frequency part because it makes it seem like I don't want to come to the, every, every monthly meeting. But really, having a monthly report, there, generally there aren't a lot of changes from one month to the next. And it is more beneficial to give a more substantive, in-context report every couple of months, every two or three months, quarterly is what the recommendation was. The goal would certainly be to make the report as useful as possible to the committee for you to be able to make appropriate decisions and recommendations for the way to address any challenges that we might be facing. And I also think it would be probably helpful to vary the way that the data is being presented. Rather than an export from our accounting system that is a very dense table of numbers covering every single account in our operating budget, I could instead focus more in buckets and like talk about what's going on in the salary bucket and what's going on in the contracted services bucket. And how about all the curricular and other materials that we've purchased so far? And then have a things that I'm watching section, which is kind of the way I've led the narration of the budget reports already. But what are the, what are the areas that we're watching that might be of concern or just are of note? And try to put that information in context relative to what was going on last year or three years ago or five years ago. So that it, it can give a little bit of a forecast and maybe a path to how we think the rest of the year is going to go and/or could go or should go. A lot of, probably the topics that would come up would be the ones that we would focus on already. Tuition and transportation and legal services and substitute costs and some of the things that can be drivers in, in how we have to figure out how to prioritize things. I mean, I think the other thing that might be useful is rather than focus entirely on the operating budget, which is kind of what I've done to date in my budget reports, is there are other fiscal items that the business office and the school committee's purview also touches. So it would be to talk a little bit about the grants that we have and kind of how those are, what they've achieved and, and what we, what we are gaining for our students and our staff through the use of the grants. Student activities is very busy. That is how our mostly secondary, middle and high school students engage in a lot of their extracurricular stuff. If there's a financial piece of what they're doing, it flows through these student activities accounts. And then the capital investments that we are able to make through the town warrant articles, both in vehicles and in technology. And so including items of interest, I guess, that fall under those accounts that are not in the operating budget, I think, could also prove to be enlightening and useful information to have.
Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome. Are there, are there any questions or even suggestions? I don't have like a, a template at the ready yet for what this report is going to look like, but I've got some good ideas at the Masbo Annual Institute. And I'll, I'll work on developing something and welcome feedback along the way as well. Hoping to engage you in this.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just a quick, I, I think, Pam, I think this is great. And I think the charts and tables, I think, me as a visual person, I'd imagine the rest of the members probably appreciate it rather than going through, you know, a ledger line by line. I think this makes a lot more sense. So looking forward to these. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Go ahead.
I, I think that the timing is fine and it sounds like the reports would be pretty in-depth. And I, I know I can trust that if something happens in the interim, the superintendent and, and you as well, Pam, are going to keep us abreast of things that we need to know. So if something unusual happens between reports, I trust we can expect to get an update at a different time if we need it.
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely. And if I, if I could add, Chair, you know, as we have our planning meetings, if there's something that does come up of interest from the committee that involves the business office, certainly, you know, we can make those adjustments as well.
No, this sounds great. Anything to become more efficient, more informed? I'm all for. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Appreciate it. All right, moving on to our next piece. We had our School Committee Retreat last Thursday. I, you know, I, I thought it was a great opportunity for us as a committee and Kristin Anderson attended with myself. And Alicia Mallon from the Massachusetts Associates and School Committee facilitated the retreat. And I think it was great. So just some quick bullet points. And honestly, I'd like to turn this over to the Chair just for some of his feedback. And we just hit some basic items, but I, I think it was time well spent.
Oh, is that turning it over to me? Is that what that constitutes?
Yes, sir, Mr. Shannon.
I, I thought it was a great use of time. Number one, everyone was there and ready to go. Number two, I, I really got the impression that it was taken seriously. People really looked hard inward. The, the committee is not, I think, satisfied with just status quo. You know, that was clear through the conversations we were having that what are things that we can improve upon? What are things that we can continue to do better? And, you know, when I, I came away with that and I felt very good about the work we did in that space. One of the things that became apparent was some of our policies have some redundancy to it. We also might want to rethink our commitment or our statement regarding public comment. So I'd like to see, I'd like to charge our policy subcommittee with, with reviewing. I know they've done some really good work on our, on our protocol, operating protocols. But I'd like to take a look at, oh, what's that document? I got it right here. Our norms and beliefs, they haven't been, they haven't been edited since 2015. So there's some, again, there's some repetition between the documents. I'd like them to take a look at that and see how they can be incorporated into, into maybe one working document. Thoughts on that?
I I think that makes sense, Mike.
Any other takeaways from from the workshop? I thought it was a really good use of time.
No, I I I mean, I'll I'll go first. I think the uh, since I was already talking, I I think uh it's just it was a great use of the time. I think we're all prepared and I think we we are uh one of the comments that came up is we are a very well functioning board. You know, people respect each other and respect each other's ideas and and thoughts and um and and to your point, Mike, not 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 just kinda resting on the status quo. So how can we continue? Even though we are doing great, how can we even be better? So um some of the the topics that we touched upon are right here, but efficiencies and and just you know, um just to be better overall. So I I I thought uh it was it was definitely a solid meeting.
Yeah, I agree. I think we uh we work appropriately together. We communicate well together, again appropriately. And uh, you know, I think that we are supportive of the work that the superintendent and his team does, but at the same time, I don't think any of us are afraid to uh ask questions and get the answers that we need. And I think one time or another, we've all um we've all said, hey, we need to know a little more about this. We need to understand this more. And to the credit, Dan and his team are always willing to be transparent with us and uh, so I think we've got a good working system going on. Doesn't mean it can't be improved, but uh we've got a good foundation to build from.
Agree.
Yeah, and and uh to touch on both of the points of the efficiency of the documents as well as the uh efficiency of us as a a board. Um, you know, we we want the kids to be as efficient as possible, but we have a couple of documents that you know, there is a lot of overlap and con- condensing them into that one definitely makes sense. It'll make a flow to make it rather than jumping back and forth. Everything is gonna be on the same page, uh even though it says a lot of the same stuff. Um, and I think that us as a board, like it's been mentioned, you know, we respect each other's backgrounds. Uh, we expect each other's uh professional backgrounds. I mean, you you look at a school board that has the the couple educators, a lawyer, you know, guys who understand finance, things like that. We have all the pieces that we ask each other questions and we respectfully communicate, you know, some of some of us don't have the same lingo that Mike and myself might have, like hearing all of the acronyms of things that go on in school, but but we're more than willing to share things like that. And we might not get some of the things on the outside. So I think that the collective that we have, the the respectability, I think is is except my dog is disagreeing disagreeing right now, but.
Anything else?
Uh, on our end, um with the with the committee, you know, the feedback is well taken. Certainly, we wanna be efficient and certainly you know, value the communication with the community, being able to show, you know, growth and show areas that we need to address um and be very clear about that stemming from public comment all through presentations, this to ensure that we're using the time as efficiently as possible. Um, so we're we're uh we're up for the task and looking forward to that.
Do um, do we need a motion to have the policy subcommittee um review those documents and edit? Oh, no, I could just think, okay, great.
Well, I don't believe you've you've given us the charge and I think we just go.
Our first the policy uh Chair is in September, so in meeting in advance, we'll make sure that's right there and I will look to have a draft prepared for that subcommittee meeting so we can vet through it and bring it to school committee in uh October.
Thank you. And Dan, did you have something else that you wanted to add here?
Yes, sir, I do. Um, just a a a point of order. I know that we have unfinished business next and then our new business and a big piece of our new business are the handbooks and approval. Although most of the work uh for approvals will be at the high school, there've been some substantive changes there on some areas. Um, just for the fact of respect, we have a few uh speakers, some students and a teacher that would like to give some input in terms of senior privilege and I'd like to do that now if it's okay. Uh, so they can leave the meeting and then uh Alan Strauss, our principal, will be here to help facilitate that, if that's okay at this time.
That's fine. If there's no objection.
Thank you very much. If uh Principal Strauss, if you're available, um I'd like to turn this over to you to talk about senior privilege for next year at the high school.
Absolutely. Janet, do you see um the students and the attendees? I don't see them.
I'm here, it's Julie O'Neil and let's see, Daylin and uh Diana, are you here? Yes.
Yeah, they were.
Wonderful. Wonderful. So um, thank you for taking us out of order. Um, so that students and Mrs. O'Neil, happy anniversary, Mrs. O'Neil.
Thanks.
Uh, get to uh speak to you a little bit and then let them go. They came and met with Mr. Demora and I in June. Um, and uh I continue to be incredibly impressed with the poison and ability of our students. I mean, I I don't know many of them, but the ones that I've seen in terms of coming in and and speaking exactly what's on their minds and doing it in a way that is powerful, um reasonable and collaborative. So they came to me and wanted to know if we could talk at all about senior privileges. Coming from multiple schools, senior privileges look very different. I was very surprised um to see that the number of senior privileges that we have here in Danvers was pretty limited, uh really to parking more than anything else. So uh the more they spoke, the more it it made some sense, but I think it's really important that you hear from them. Uh, let them talk and Miss O'Neil, I'll give it to you as class advisor. Um, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Strauss. So I'm Julie O'Neil. I am the senior class advisor for the class of twenty six. And with me today, we have our class president, uh Daylin Martinez and our class secretary, Deanna Figurito. Uh, I trust them implicitly. So why don't the two of you take the floor and just kind of go over the points, if you don't mind, of what we discussed with Mr. Strauss about the proposed senior privileges.
Hi, my name is Deanna Figurito. I'm the secretary for the class of twenty twenty six. And I'm gonna be talking about the parking and also our free tickets. So for the first time ever, the DHS administration is giving seniors the opportunity to decorate parking spots in the student lot. This fundraiser was highly requested by the class of twenty twenty six. We just closed submissions for our design slash parking spots on August first and sold over seventy five spots in total. The painting for those who purchase a spot is on August twenty first, nine AM to two PM. And then we're also very excited to announce that this school year, seniors now have the opportunity to attend DHS sporting events free of charge. This includes all non-MIA championship games and competitions. We hope that this effort will increase the attendance and support for our student athletes.
Hi, my name's Daylin Martinez and I'm the class president of the class of twenty six. Um, we're also discussing about um the opportunity to leave early during study hall or leave um later. Um, seniors who have the study block um in their schedule would be able to leave school or arrive late to school without penalty. Uh, we believe eligible individuals would need to be passing all their classes and would also have will need for um parent permission.
Thank you both. I'll just interject real quick. The final thing that uh Daylin was just talking about, we haven't finalized any of those details. It's a conversation we've had with Mr. Strauss and I believe he has had with Mr. Bauer and we really wanna solidify something like that. And if you're not familiar with our schedule in the high school, it is a waterfall schedule. And so if for some reason a senior would have a study that sits first block or last block in the day, they would, as long as they're in good academic standing with the parent's permission, have uh the ability to come in late or leave early. We are working on logistics of uh if they come in, when they're not meant to be there, where would they go? How do they sign in and out? And we're really hopeful that that is something that um can be approved and that is we will continuously check the academic standing of these students who have permission. So it's not just a one-off, there you go for the year. Um, but those are the three major things that we've been working on to really, you know, show the seniors that we are um helping encourage them making smart decisions, becoming adults as they'll be leaving the school this year, um and you know, making a good way in the world. So there we are. Does anyone have any questions about that?
I'll start. I I have three children that went to DHS. The oldest benefited from things that very similar to what you're talking about. Um, without the parking or anything like that, but um I get the academic piece. What if, what if the violation is on the behavioral side? I I'll be the one to throw that out there.
I I can respond to that.
Citizen. What are what are we gonna do then?
So
Sure.
One of the things that we're gonna be looking at is um obviously academics are are key. We're gonna continue to check it not only through a marking period, but if a student loses the ability to have um early release or late arrival for uh term one, they can't earn that back term two academically. So I think that's important. I don't I don't believe um in in the position that we're in that we should be saying all or nothing to kids. I think I I don't like that message necessarily. Um, I think
I agree.
Everybody can earn things back. Behaviorally, it's it's exactly the same thing. So if there are issues behaviorally, um of which we are going to begin to uh call that out over the next two weeks, the same kinds of things, including what we're gonna be talking about in a little while with cell phone violations. So in order to come in late, in order to leave early, you must be in good academic behavioral standing. Um, and not be abusing this privilege. If you're abusing the cell phone privilege and and you're you're um constantly tardy to class during the day, you're gonna lose that extra privilege. Um, I don't see it being a problem. I I tend to see our seniors generally, just from my experience, to deeply appreciate this opportunity. You know, again, we're not talking about middle of the day. We're talking about first period and last period. Um, if a student continues who has this, continues to come in beyond um after first period and and they have late arrival and they're coming in in the middle of the second period, they're gonna lose their ability to come in late. So I I think this is a win-win for our students. I I think that it's certainly something our seniors deserve. Um, and it is only going to be for seniors. I I know our juniors will be calling us soon, saying when can we have it? But um it will stick with seniors.
No, thank you for that. And I I don't wanna get uh, you know, give the wrong impression. I I actually love the idea and I and I thank give thanks uh to the students for bringing this to our attention. Anything that drives positivity, um it I'm all for it. It's just as we know, and I'm a high school teacher, there's always gonna be some outline and it's gonna have to be dealt with. And to hear what you said just said, I really appreciate that. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chair, if I may, I just have one one question as well.
Yep.
Um, as a um, as a coach, um I I my question will be um on the after-school activity part of it. If these students choose to um and it goes through, I I would have no problem with the ends of the day. But if they're late for their activities, um you know, that that's a, that's tough for their teammates and their coaches. It would that also play into um their privileges of getting to leave early if they can't make it back for a two thirty practice or a two forty five practice, whatever time that um their teams go.
Uh, that's a great question. I I I think that
I've been through it before. That's why I'm asking.
Sure, and and I've coached for years and and so I've seen the same thing. I I think that um I'm I'm actually meeting with all the coaches and Drew Betts. Um, and and part of what we're gonna talk about is not only this, but Smart Pass cell phones. Um, the expectations and and knowing students as I do, once we set the the rule and we stick by it, they will then do what they're supposed to do, which means we have to have coaches doing the same thing. Coaches cannot be allowing. The advantage we have is that practices really don't start until two fifty, um almost three o'clock for most of our teams because teachers aren't getting out until two forty five.
Right.
Um, kids are staying for after school. So I would be very worried about this. And and one of the things that I first said when I heard it was I worry about um early dismissal because you're gonna have kids trying to fly in for two fifteen practice um with buses and and everybody leaving, but that's not an issue in Danvers. So I think we should be fine. Um, but if it begins to impact programs, then yes, absolutely. There is a responsibility.
Okay, appreciate you. Thank you.
Yep.
So if there are no other questions from the committee, um oh, Mr. Hamilton has his hand raised, one of our assistant principals.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer and uh
That's to the Chair right now.
Oh, okay. Mr. Shannon, I just wanted to add a a great presentation from Mrs. O'Neil and the students. Uh, uh, they mentioned good academic standing. They mentioned, you know, making sure they're meeting all the behavioral expectations. Uh, but there's one other component that it's it's in, it'll be in the handbook changes too, but it's worth noting right now is that uh there also has to be adherence to the attendance policy. So that's kind of the third barometer in uh teasing out, you know, students eligibility for uh the senior privileges. So the academics, the behavior, and then the attendance. I just wanna add that piece before uh uh we lost the the conversation about uh senior privileges. So thank you.
Thanks for that, Mr. Hamilton.
And as we wrap this up, I know we're gonna go into the um, when we get to the new business with the handbooks, I just wanna say as a former principal and working with uh Mr. Strauss and he brought me into the loop of this and I've I like the fact that we raise expectations. Students will rise to level expectations, but we as the adults have to be consistent with maintaining those expectations. And I'm glad you asked about the social piece because that is a big part. Um, and we were able to use and meet with senior class officers throughout the year in my previous experience that can tie into this. Um, and I think it's important that uh Miss O'Neil is here. Happy anniversary to you uh as well as students. Cause it means a lot coming from the students. So I applaud Mr. Strauss and the team bringing this together. I know we wanted to come now before we get to the rest of the meeting, but I just wanna say thank you. Um, and that's all I have.
Great job. Well done.
Yep, thank you.
All right, thank you. I think Diana, Daylin and I will sign off then, if that's good.
Perfect.
Go enjoy your anniversary.
I know. We have some Vietnamese food waiting. Can't wait. Thanks so much, everyone.
Bye-bye.
I think we're now
Right, we're heading to unfinished business. Uh, Mr. Bauer, anything on the meeting, the meeting dates for uh the twenty five, twenty six school year?
Uh, no, sir. Uh, at this point, uh, the meeting dates are as advertised. Um, I can certainly bring this up on the screen if you want me to, but we've shared that document. Not there are no changes, but we've listed the school committee meetings. The adjustments due to holidays, uh Monday at six thirty. This is the only virtual meeting for school committee. Our subcommittee meetings, um they rotate monthly and they are virtual. So they're all listed. Um, and the committee has the document. There's nothing we need to vote on this, but just to make sure that we're we're good to go to solidify for this year.
Gentlemen, any concerns before we move on?
Mr. Chair, I did have one question. The um, I I I noticed there was asterisks on that. Is that to denote if it is uh virtual? After, there was about five meetings that had asterisks. If if I may, Chair, those are um when those are on the alternate dates. So instead of the second Monday, that might be the first Monday. For example, in October, we have uh Columbus slash Indigenous Peoples' Day, which I think is the thirteenth, we're gonna go on the sixth. Got it. Okay, thank you. No concerns for me otherwise.
Alright, we'll move on then. Thank you. On recommendation to approve strategic plan, Mr. Bauer.
I am muted. Thank you. So
We are glitching.
Yeah, and I don't know if that's on my, that might be on mine. So I have a backup plan in case mine goes off. My Kristen will take over and she she's done a lot of work here, second part. So I'd like to share my screen if I can. Um, just, there really are no changes. I just wanna bring this back to, hold on one second. Apologize. All right, I think we're all okay here. So in our timeline, you know, we went, uh, we've brought everything in terms of tons of feedback in terms to build our vision and our mission statements. Drafts have been circulated through our administrative team. The advisory council, which was outstanding, the administrative council, um, for school committee feedback. The final draft, um, the draft we shared in June, but we wanted to do some more work. So we're here tonight. To really bring this to fruition, to vote on this. This is our five-year strategic plan. And we kept the mission very simple, which I think is very important. And our vision, uh, we did a lot of wordsmithing on this and a lot of great feedback from all of our stakeholders and the theory of action that really drives. Our mission and our vision. And really diving into the port of the graduate, which I think. This is our next step to really bring our district forward even further. We talked about this and we're gonna tie everything we do into our portrait of the graduate. But more importantly, the. The actual strategic priorities fall into the four pillars. And the teaching and learning, school-wide systems and structures, family and partner, community partnerships, district procedures and policies. These will remain consistent throughout the five-year life. The, the thing that I think is important, alright, those are the sub-goals. Under that, so everything we do, we're gonna tie back to our strategic plan and we'll tie this into our agendas moving forward once approved. As we build our district improvement plans, our school improvement plans. And then report out throughout the year and as well at the end of the year, updates in terms of our progress to achieve the goals. So I just wanted to give you an example, right? I'm not gonna go through the whole plan right now. We've seen this. But breaking down the sub-goal, but then the actions, how can we actually support the sub-goal of curriculum alignment review? There are the, the, the major steps and then the potential performance indicators. And this will be revised each year as we move through this. And as we, we move down the road. And how this is gonna tie into our strategic plan in terms of our district improvement plan, you can see just, this is just a brief example. We present this, so we linking our, um, one-one, which is our student achievement and teaching and learning piece. The timeframe, who is doing it, the resources available, then the status. And then if you look at the next one that we're working for district improvement plan, which we'll present in, in September. But the portrait of the learner and the competencies, this is gonna be a, a larger piece of work for us to really dive in a two-year piece. Under the subheading, um, and this will break down. So what I think is important a- about the whole. Strategic plan is that it's live, right? It can be adjusted as we move forward because we want flexibility. You know, God forbid we have a, a major thing like in twenty twenty, which I don't even wanna mention. But we need to move forward, but we also need progress monitoring as we go to show what have we done and then make alignments if we haven't achieved. What do we need to do to bring this goal further? Uh, and once we achieve, be able to move on. And, and I think it's, it's very well done and just would like to present this for approval by the school committee tonight. I think I've frozen up or I don't know if Mike's frozen up.
I think Mike is.
Yeah, Mike, you want? You might wanna kill your video.
Can you hear us, Mike?
How about now? Can you hear me?
A little sketchy.
Well, yeah, you might wanna kill your video, Mike.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Well, same, Mike, as you appear to be frozen.
Alright. Gotcha.
I can, I can hear you.
And we can hear you.
Alright. So I'll, I'll entertain a motion. If anyone so, is so inclined.
A move to approve the. Five-year strategic plan as presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
If I could, Mr. Chair. This is obviously the, uh, the product of an incredible amount of work and contribution. From, uh. So many different people. I think it captures. What we would like to be as a district in five years and where we would like to go and. I think, uh, this will form a good roadmap. I think Danvers is one of the first districts. Years ago to, um, go through the strategic planning process. I think this is actually our third strategic plan. And, um. It's something to be proud of and I think this is, uh, a well-laid out plan with some real. Goals, measurements, um, and things that we know we wanna look at. So I think, uh, I can get behind this.
Anyone else? I really, I really liked the visual that, uh, who put the visual together of the, that was fantastic.
A lot, a lot of that was done, uh, as Mary was, uh, winding down and. Working with some of the stakeholders on that piece and Kristen has now taken the baton on that. Um, and the visuals are important. We're really looking to, and we'll talk more about our branding, uh, in our next meeting. But more importantly, just keeping it very simple. That was the message, uh, less wordy. Just get right down to it because when we dive down to a pre-K to twelve, what's happening in our classrooms? That connect to all these important pieces, the portrait of the graduate, uh, portrait of the learners, it may be called. So, um, I'm excited about this and. We're really looking to refine this even further so we can stamp this on everything that we do.
Yeah, I agree. Simple is better. And to Eric's point, I, I was in, I was in a lot of those spaces when you called in the different stakeholders to. To offer their thoughts and. He's right. Those, there was a, a, an unbelievable amount of information gathered to really inform. This process. So kudos to everybody that had a role with it. And, um, I, I, I agree with Eric. I can get behind this very easily.
I had one question as I thought of it. It's really just semantic. Do we want to refer to this as the portrait of a learner or portrait of a graduate? We have, we've used both and some might say, well, it makes no difference, but. From the sense of how we want to view this and how, how we wanna present it to the public, which, which should be. Which do you prefer again? What are we looking at here?
Well, the, the, the piece, as you say, that's used. I've heard different communities, they use it the same way. It's a, it's a pre-K twelve vision, right? And yes, at the graduate, that, this is what our students, you know, when they cross the graduation line, this is what they will be able to do to be successful. But I really like the portrait of the learner because it really dives down deep, you know, because I wanted to connect with pre-K, grade one. Kindergarten all the way through.
Makes sense. Anyone else? Hearing nothing else, take a vote.
Mike Shannon.
Yes.
Eric Crane.
Yes.
Sean Doherty.
Yes.
Josh Kepnis.
Yes.
Gabe Lobes.
Yes.
Very nice. Moving on. We got the next item. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Uh, the next item is the, uh, second reading of policy ILD, which is the student survey. Policy and, um, with the advice of the committee and, and the direction guidance. Looking for some further refinement because the actual. The important thing about this policy is that, you know, it just sets the parameters for opt-out. And also like, you know, what, what are our protocols? As we dive down deep and, and we develop and, and implement. The procedures which we already have. Um, I, I, I think this policy is well needed because we use surveys. For many different things and Kristen pointed out, you know, when we talk about social emotional, we create a lot of our own surveys. And the point that I wanna bring to the committee, um, I met with Roseanne DePeach, our, our council for the school committee. And she really dug into and, and actually the version that you see of policy. ILD is cleaned up a little bit. The wording, it's still the same format that's advised through the school committee. Association. And she advised state to that because those are important premises. But she wanted to point out, and, and I do have an opportunity, if I can just share. I just did a little bit of tweaking in a, a few of the slides today. I don't know if you can see. And I just kept this very brief. So the prior consent piece, which dives into the US Department of Education, so anything through the Department of Education. Right, uh, and protected information that requires prior consent. So this policy written really lays out what this is. So anything that we would do that would be directly related to the Department of Education, um, through a survey. You know, that is the, that is the piece where prior consent, essentially the opt-in has to occur. So what we talked a lot about in our last meeting is just, it was not clear. This document makes it very clear because all of the surveys that we use are not this. They're the version that is for the, the opt-out, right? Which. Because they're not affiliated and directly created or funded by the US government, ours are internal through our own, um, creation. So the opt-out and the notice that we have to provide is that we need to notify parents and guardians at least annually at the beginning of the year, which we will. Specific or approximate dates when we have noted specific surveys that will be coming down the road. And then offer parents and guardians opportunity to opt the student out of participation, which is important. But the piece that's really important though is number one, the procedures for this, to make sure that parents. Guardians have reasonable access to the instructional materials connected to any of the surveys within a reasonable time after the request received. So knowing if we have a survey going out in three weeks, we need to notify parents with plenty of time. And then how will that look? But just please note the instructional material does not account academic tests or assessments, very clear in that. And also important for the committee to note is the protection of student privacy. That was highlighted more, uh, through. Roseanne's work, our council, and I, I really like. How she refined and made this very specific for, uh, what we need. Be successful with our opt-out procedures and protocols, but more importantly, to provide the overall umbrella of the policy to move forward. So that's it. I just kept that very simple, uh, just that update. So the version that you see that I put in the folder. Has made it very clear about, uh, those that are connected with the US government under the Parental Rights Act. Versus our surveys, which are internal, uh, that we create, which is the opt-out. So I hope that answers the question.
Thank you for that.
Spent a lot of time with Roseanne on that one.
Do I hear a motion?
A move to approve the policy as presented.
Second.
Hearing the mo- hearing a motion made and seconded, do we have some discussion? Again, I'll start. I agree, Dan. It's been cleaned up very nicely and made much clearer than the, the prior iteration. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Hearing no more discussion, we're ready for the vote.
Gabe Lobes.
Approved.
Josh Kepnis.
Yes.
Sean Doherty.
Yes.
Eric Crane.
Yes.
Mike Shannon.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And I, I wanna say thank you to the school committee. You gave me a great charge and I think this clarification will go a long way. So thank you.
New business. Their superintendent recommends to approve the HRMS student handbook.
Yes, Chair, if I may. We have three handbooks tonight we'd like for approval, uh, and please note that the. Most of the handbooks, uh, we have our annual. Cleaning up, as they may say, where there may be changes with some contact information, uh, language tightening up. But, uh, anything of substantive nature for the elementary and for the middle school, uh, there aren't any this year. It's, it's basically just been cleaned up and some reformatting as we go along. We need those approved. But the high school does have, uh, a few pieces of substantive changes. I did put together. A quick slide if, if I may, I can share this with you. And then, um, in order, as you wish, to go through the approval, I do have our principals here. Tonight and I appreciate them taking time out of their schedule to answer any questions. And I know Mr. Strauss will talk a lot about. The changes at the high school we're proposing. And also I have Mr. Sullivan here because there was one thing that we needed to add to all the handbooks. In terms of, uh, Google, uh, because we are a Google school district. So I will bring this up if I can. Give me one second, please. Thank you for your patience with me. Hopefully I can get this going. Alright, are you able to see, uh? You okay with that? Alright, great. Alright, so as, as I mentioned, overall, uh, mostly edits and revisions at all levels. It's a yearly exercise that we go through. There are three things that we did add to all the handbooks. Number one, and I'll ask, uh, Mr. Sullivan in a moment if he can explain this, but. The educational technology tools, Google Workspace for Education, this really goes into protecting, uh, student privacy. Secondly, the inclusive curriculum statement. It's just basically says that our curricular materials are consistent with Massachusetts regulations. And lastly, the parental guardian guide that, um, we worked on last year and the school committee asked and we presented. We put that in all the handbooks too, because we're always looking for ways to approve, improve communication. So if it's okay, Chair, I'd like to ask. Mr. Sullivan to come in just to talk briefly about the educational technology tools.
Of course.
Uh, good evening. Thank you, Dr. Bauer, Mr. Chair, uh, Jim Sullivan, Director of Technology. Uh, good evening. Just, we have a quick, um. Section, a small section we're looking to add to our student handbooks, uh, which really is, is nothing new. It's not anything new or different that we're doing, but. It's just adding some information about, um, some of the. Ed tech or the technology tools and applications that we use in our classrooms and, you know, with our students on a daily, you, you know, daily basis. Google recommends, um, that we, you know, we put a. You know, disclosure or, or permission of sorts just to, you know, let families know, you know, what we're doing, you know, that we're using. Google Workspace accounts with our students, then they have access to the Google tools. And, you know, really just adding some, um, you know, uh, transparency or just letting people know that, um, you know. If anybody has any questions about what we're using in the classroom or wants to see. You know, any of the privacy policies or the data privacy agreements, those things are available for review and happy to, to share that information. I do, you know, always encourage families to reach out if they have any questions or concerns, whether it's to me or their principal. We can certainly, uh, answer any of those questions that come up. But that's what we're looking to add, uh, to all three handbooks since we use, you know, Google at all levels. And other ed tech tools as well.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
And I, as we do, um, you know, at each level, when our principals send their emails out, the opening up. They'll make points to anything that's new to, um, the handbooks and I'll make note of these three areas in my own communication as well. Um, and if okay through the chair, I know we have the three handbooks to approve and I know the agenda is in, um. You know, it lays it out where we have the middle, I believe, in elementary. But the, the high school handbook is, uh, has the most changes. And the next slide actually brings into play those four areas. So if it's okay with you, I'd like to bring Mr. Strauss out just to talk through. And see if the committee has any questions on these four major areas.
Thank you Superintendent Bauer. Um, I know Patrick Hamilton is on as well. I wanna thank, um, Mrs. LeBlanc, our other assistant principal. She is on a well-deserved vacation and will be coming back, but she. Has been heavily involved in this, as has Peter Demora. In his one of many roles that he takes on in Danvers. I, I wanna start by saying that. When I came and, and was first hired and the conversation started with cell phones, it typically is a year-long process. And I wanna give, uh, Mr. Demoro, Mr. Hamilton. Miss LeBlanc and the teachers, some, um, kudos for. Keeping the focus in on how do we make this work? And speeding the process up. Um, I, I think that they did a really good job. I also wanna. You know, remind all of you that. For every decision that we make in this, there're gonna be fifty people who are gonna say, nope, that's not the right way to do it. I, I've seen that. Having gone through three cellphone policies and, and other buildings that I've been in. I think the policy that we have come up with, regardless of what the state is talking about for next year, is the one that makes the most sense. For a number of reasons. So just to remind, just to reiterate every, uh, to everybody what Mr. Demora. So just to remind, just to reiterate every, to everybody what Mr. Demora had presented so eloquently in, in the spring. We are not going to a bell-to-bell model, we are going to a classroom no-use model. So students will be coming into the building. They will be going to their first period class, they will lock up their cell phones in a case. And they will get it back at the end of the period. They are able to use it in transition to their next period class. They are able to use it during cafeteria, during lunchtime. There has to be consistency in this through teachers and, and we've talked with our teachers a lot about that. But this is the model that seems to make the most sense. Even though there are people who are saying we should go right to bell-to-bell, which is the minute you walk in, you give it up and, and you don't get it back until the end of the day. I want to refer back to Principal Colton, he is on here. I know that they did a great deal of work last year with the anxious generation, the book, The Anxious Generation. If you take excerpts from that or, or really any kind of research that has been done on the impact of social media, cell phones on, on teenagers. The one consistent is that whether we want to say our students or some students are addicted to it or not, they have addictive-like behaviors. And to simply all of a sudden on the first day of school say, give it to me, it's gone. We wouldn't do that to anybody who's going through an addiction. We, we need to ensure that we can help our students create habits of mind to see that they do not need to use this during a classroom period. And to simply take it away, I think would cause a tremendous amount of angst at the beginning of the year that we don't necessarily, we're not necessarily prepared for. And I don't think is going to do what we want in the end of the, at, at the end of the year anyway. They leave high school, they're going to be able to use their cellphone. In, in my opinion, it would be wonderful by the end of the senior year this year, if our seniors can say, I don't need it in class anymore. That would be a wonderful, a, a, a wonderful litmus test. But with that, we do have to make sure that there's accountability for our students. So Mr. Hamilton, if you want to start to go through some of, not all, but, but some of the consequences for cellphone violations.
Sure. So just to add to what you're, what Mr. Strauss is talking about. And when you see the changes that are in the, the proposed changes for the handbook, you know, we're really trying to frame this as everybody, we, we, we are, we're all stakeholders here and we all want to try to work to the same, you know, to the same end. And in order to do that, you know, you'll notice that there are student responsibilities. There are caregiver responsibilities, there are teacher responsibilities, and then there are administration responsibilities. And, you know, the, the way it's supposed to work is that if we're all taking care of our responsibilities as the specific stakeholders, then we should be able to, you know, bear some really good results with helping students not feel as though they need to be engaged and connected all the time, particularly during class time. But when those types of responsibilities are not always being adhered to or followed, then we get into some of the, you know, discussion around what are some logical and natural consequences that may need to be addressed with students who are maybe not able to meet the responsibilities part in the student section as outlined in the proposed changes of the handbook. So just to kind of go through it, we kind of have a, you know, three, you know, three opportunities for students to, you know, right the ship if they are not in compliance with our cellphone policy. So basically, if a student is in violation of the policy on their first offense, then they would come down, they would be sent to the office, they would have to meet with an administrator, either myself, Mrs. LeBlanc, Mr. Strauss, and from time to time, Mr. Demora, when we need him to, to support us with this. And the cellphone will be turned over to the office for the remainder of the day. And then parents and guardians will be notified. And again, with the, their responsibility is to support us with this and, and back us up on this. And our goal would be to reach out to parents and guardians to ask them to have a follow-up conversation with their student so that, you know, everybody is clear about what the expectations are. Second offense, students would be sent to the office similar to the first. However, phone is turned over and it remains in the, in the office for the remainder of the day. But then students would need to, each morning for the next three consecutive days, they would need to come and check in their phone to the office. And they would not have access to their phones in between classes and during lunchtime as the other students would due to their not being able to adhere to the policy for, for a second time. If a student gets to the third offense, same idea, they would need to come down and meet with the administrator. The phone stays with us for the remainder of the day. More conversations and more engagement with parents and guardians to try to get that, you know, everyone on the same page. And then at this point, the, the student would need to check the phone in the office for seven school days. And then hopefully, you know, students have been able to make adjustments appropriately at that point and hopefully before that. But if that is still not the case, then we do have a situation. If after the third offense, a student could lose the cellphone, they would have to meet with the administrator, we would again meet with parents and guardians. And the phone would be, they would lose access to the phone for 40 school days. Again, the goal here is to be progressive with the way we are implementing logical and natural consequences here. So our hope is that students figure it out after the first try, first offense. If they want to continue to have that, you know, the ability to carry their phone between classes and check them in and then have them at lunchtime, then they would need to adhere to the policy as it's outlined in the proposed handbook changes.
So to add a couple of things to that, thank you, Mr. Hamilton. It's for up to 40 school days, doesn't necessarily have to be 40 school days. But I think what's important is this is not a policy in which a student would get three offenses per, per class. So period one, they get three offenses, period two, they get three offenses. It's three offenses across the board. And, and so data is going to be real important, consistency is going to be real important. Students are not going to be able to take their phones to the bathrooms with them. They're not going to be texting their friends to say, come meet in the bathroom. And, and I, I will say, 95% of our students will be fine with this. First week will be difficult, first two weeks might be a little difficult. It, it's going to be the four or five percent that we really need to look at. I know some of the questions that Assistant Superintendent Anderson was talking about in terms of social, emotional, we're going to have to make sure that we have supports in place for our students who are really struggling. Obviously, our students who are on IEPs or 504 or medical and need a use of their phone will be able to with documented verification, that, that certainly is not a problem. They will not be able to leave their phone out in the middle of their desk, but they will be able to use it just as they would, whether, especially for a medical situation. I, I think it's important to understand that when we talk here about loss of privileges beyond obviously senior privileges we just talked about. But I see that, I'm going to use him as an example and I hope he doesn't mind, Alex Grover is on right now. Hi Alex. So one of the things that I'm going to be talking to the coaches about is if we are struggling with a student athlete not doing what they're supposed to do with their phones, we are going to start talking about practices. We are going to start talking about how does that impact other things? That also has to, to be fair to athletes, that has to happen across the board. Whether it is theater, whether it's band camp, our, our band, whether it's choir and Alex, Decca. You know, it can't be certain kids are held to a higher standard with this, it has to be across the board. And, and we're going to work really hard on that. Again, I don't expect this to be a problem for 95% of our students. Some will be frustrated with it at times. But I think if we said to most adults in the workplace, you can no longer use your phone from the moment you walked into, the moment you left, they would be frustrated as well. Parents certainly can call offices. We are going to work, Drew Betts is working really hard to make sure that coaches are not contacting, coaches are not contacting student athletes during a day via Remind, Remind Apps or anything else that they will be sending emails. Because again, students do have the ability to look at email through their Chromebooks. So I think that's the general gist in regard to cell phones, and I think we should take this one at a time to see if you have any questions.
I'll go. I understand, and I agree with you that for a policy like this to work, it has to be implemented with fidelity in the classrooms. However, is there flexibility with certain classrooms that may require the use of, say, a scientific calculator on their phone? Or is there, is there some other accommodation for that?
So Peter, are you on? Peter Demora? I think he is.
Yes, I'm here.
Do you want to respond to that as curriculum?
Yeah. So part, part of our process, I've been working with all the stakeholder groups, was asking that specific question. We met with teacher groups and student groups. Part of the feedback form was what do you currently use it for in class? So we've been, over the course of the spring, exploring alternatives. So a lot of the tools and resources that they say that phones have been traditionally used for in class and looking to see if there is an alternative that can be used on the Chromebook or otherwise.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yep.
I think this, this makes sense in the, in the, in the sense that in a perfect world, you wouldn't have cell phones in the classroom at all. Because there's, is, they, they don't help the educational process in a general sense, they're really just a distraction. So in a perfect world, it'd be great if students didn't have or need access to them at all. But not only the students and the parent, the parents too, I think we are beyond that point. I think with each successive generation of parents and students, parents are more concerned about their students' safety and what they're doing and, and how things are going when they're out of the parent's sight. And that's, I think, simply a truth. My generation of parents, I had my kids in the nineties, we were more nervous and more helicopter-like than the generation before us. And I think with each generation, succeeding, I think that we're running into this. So I think that a total ban would be impractical from the standpoint of both the students and the parents' expectations and, and needs. At the same time, I think what you've come up with here should, you know, provide for the efficacy of the learning in the classroom without interference from the cellphone. So I think it's a, it's a good solution for us as a starting.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yes.
The, so I, I agree with what Eric said. It sounds like a nice compromise to, versus a bell-to-bell for, you know, and Mr. Strauss brought up a good point about if people are addicted, it's hard to kind of just stop cold turkey, so to speak, right? So I think this is kind of a nice, a nice compromise. Now for my questions, actually, the, the question that I have is the, my understanding is they, all students would sign off on their handbook at the beginning of the year, right? All the policies and things. What I would suggest is even an additional sign-off on this, which actually calls out the actual cellphone policy. I don't, I, I think I did bring this up at the last, when we brought it up in, in the spring when it was up for discussion. But I would suggest that we actually have an additional sign-off on this, which actually shows what the, what the potential repercussions could be. So there's a little bit more skin in the game for, for the kids. This is going to be a learning period for, for both the students and the teachers and the administration, right? And, and I, I understand that there'll be, you know, kind of growing pains on this, but I, I do think if we, if we make it crystal clear at the beginning of the year, I think that would be, that would be my suggestion.
Absolutely. We can, we can absolutely do that. That makes sense.
I just had one more thought. I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
How long, how long do students have to pass between classes at the high school?
There's a four-minute passing time.
Are we concerned at all that retrieving the cell phones and getting out of the classroom is going to slow some students in terms of getting to the next class? Or do we figure they can still do that within the time?
So the retrieval of, of cell phones is a pretty quick process with, that teachers will do, they're not going to do 10 minutes early, they're going to do in the last minute of class. We are looking at how are we going to manage this when there are substitutes? That's a whole nother concern. But no, we do not see that as a problem. And I, I think that, you know, we are going to have lots of conversation with teachers. And if they're seeing that that's a problem, then we are going to have to navigate that a little bit.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Chair, if I may ask a question?
Go ahead.
I had a, a barking dog, so I think I caught pieces of something. But when it came to coaches not using apps, was that, did I get that right? Not using Remind, but instead sending an email?
Correct.
Okay. As a coach, I know for myself, emailing, I work in special education. I drive to Boston to coach in the spring and I coach in Georgetown in the fall. It, it's a lot ea- I'm just throwing this to you. It's a lot easier to have people join in your class and send a message to the class than it is to try to build a varsity-only little thing. So I'm just throwing that out there if that's, I, I don't know if other coaches and other people feel that same way. I know for me to try to, if I have to talk to the, the whole group, whether it's parents and kids, I can just send one message, I don't have to dig through my contact list, if that makes sense.
Right. So what, what we're talking about with Drew, and again, I coach, so, so I feel your pain, is we are going to be creating Google classrooms for, and you could do a JV, you could do a varsity, you could do a freshman, you could do all. And, and, but we really have to be careful about allowing, if we allow one group to start sending texts, then we've got to worry about every group sending texts. That becomes the problem with this.
Right. Well, I'm, I'm going to play a little, the reason that reminded, as you probably know, and other people who aren't familiar with programs such as Remind is it's not really a text, it's just a, I mean, it, it acts as a test, text, but it's through that app and they can't see my phone numbers and nothing gets deleted. So it's, I'm covered, they're covered in case somebody accuses of somebody. So it, there's, the, the, the trail is there. As a coach, I think it's probably the greatest communication piece that's ever been made in terms of, you know, the, the ease of, again, what I do for a living, I can't compose an email, I can send a, a, a 60-character thing saying practice is going to be at eight because it's raining, that type of thing. So I'm just, I'm just putting that out there. I mean, it, the, if, if all the coaches have the ability to have a Google classroom on their phone, you know, like, I think it, I'm just throwing it out there that it goes outside of the scope of, if the coaches or teachers in the building, sure, they have a computer. But if they don't have a phone that has the capability to hook up the Google classroom, I'm just throwing that curve ball at you. Because I know for me, it's a real pain to communicate through email. Email is, I have nine email addresses and the only one that I pay attention to is my school committee one. I have to hear about it in person, somebody who sends me an email. I have to hear about it in person, somebody who sends me an email has to say, hey, I sent you an email, look at your email. That's how bad it is, but uh, I'm just throwing it out to you that I know that, yes, we're talking about our students, but there's also the. Um, access for the people who are going to be communicating with them on time-sensitive materials, I'm just playing devil's advocate a little bit.
Can I, can I interject a little bit here, Chair, if you don't mind? My coach hat on too, and principal hat, knowing that, I think the big piece is creating consistency of communication with our coaches in terms of timeframes. Um, that will help us a great deal because some of our coaches are not in, you know, not in our buildings teaching. Um, and I think that's really the crux of this, so that, you know, um, streamlining the windows of communication when they communicate. I think that will take pressure off of our student athletes because they're going to want to know if something's happening, if. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Demora, Mrs. Strauss, I think that's really the intent. Of as it creates some standardization of the times of communication with our coaches and advisors, right?
Yeah, no, I, no question, and, and certainly, Coach, we, we um. We sat and Drew and I had the conversation, do we trust? The students? To only look at their phones during transition time? Um, and say, okay, you have transition time, if Coach will send you something, you can look at it then. What we're trying to do is to prevent as much as possible. From vibrating in their pockets, because that's going to be what's happening, and then once it vibrates in their pocket, then we know where their brain goes.
Right.
So we've got to kind of figure that out, um, and some of this, you know, one of the reasons why I'm really happy with. The steps that we're taking is we can tweak this along the way. Um, you know, the state is saying this all or nothing, you have no place to go with all or nothing. And uh, there are a lot of pieces in there that I, I tend to believe the state hasn't looked into yet. Um, and it's kind of dumping it on, on every school, so I think we're ahead of the game. Um, and we're able, um, I think Peter and, and Patrick and Carrie did a phenomenal job. Kind of roping this in, and um, we're going to have lots of conversation, but it's going to be consistent across the board, which was really what my point was. Whether it's coaches, whether it's, you know, band, whether it's DECA, we have to make sure that. All groups of kids are being treated the same.
Right.
Otherwise, it's not fair.
No, absolutely, I, I, I completely agree with the standards being held across, I just know on the other side of that coin. Again, I'm just putting it out there as, as a, a conversation point that. Um, where I work with special ed students, um, and I can't always be. Sitting down and composing because I'm, I'm constantly moving, uh, if it's a rainy day and I have to put practice indoors at three instead of it. At two thirty outside, practice is going to be in the gym, I can just send that real quick. Open remind app, go, announcement, boom, done, takes about two seconds, so that's, that's the only thing I'm throwing you, I know sometimes on the other side of the coin. Yes, we're, we're, we're thinking about our students, but it, it's also their activities, and if they don't know where they have to be right at the end of the school day, that could pay, play it, you know, the. The gossip chain could be bouncing around school, oh, well, so-and-so told me there was no practice at all, you know, that type of thing. So I'm just throwing it out there, the things that I, coaching in the different communities I coach in, I've seen all kinds of. You know, the, the gossip train, so I'm just throwing it out there, um, as a, a conversation point and a piece that, you know, on the coach's side of it, that can be difficult sometimes. Depending on what they use, that's all.
And at our next meeting, um, I'm sure we're going to give some kind of report, or I'll give it to, to Superintendent Bauer, just to kind of. Give you all information as to where we settled with this, uh, because we're not going to really know until we start it. There are going to be a lot of tweaks in this, no question.
Absolutely, I appreciate, I appreciate you letting me throw my piece out there.
So that's.
That's it. Oh, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say that, any other questions on cell phones before we go to Smart Pass?
I don't think so.
Okay. Um, as you know, and I'm going to turn it over to um. Mr. Hamilton, but as you know, uh, we implemented Smart Pass last year. Um, I, I think it is a terrific tool, just to remind everybody and, and anybody in the audience. Smart Pass is a uh, computer program in which we have the ability to. Monitor where students are, are, how much time they are utilizing. Um, outside of a class, um, they have to get permission to be able to get out of a class. We have the ability to, if for example, um, Dan Bauer and Alan Strauss should never be. Uh, in the hallways together, we have the ability to keep them apart, um, by not allowing. Them to cross paths, um, Dan wants to go to somewhere. And suddenly, he's not going to be able to text Alan and say, hey, let's meet, let's meet, you know, down by the gym. Um, so, so that's going to be taken care of, but. The idea of Smart Pass last year was we allowed students five, five pass opportunities during the school day. We are moving that down to three. Um, and I think that's going to make a big difference, the other thing that we're going to do is we're going to begin, begin to truly. Track the data and share it with families, share it with teachers as to. Alan Strauss has been um, out on three passes a day for an average of forty-one minutes in those three passes. Over five days, that's a hundred and fifty minutes of, or, or whatever it is, uh, two hundred minutes out of class. Um, it is much easier to have conversations with direct data than it is to simply say. You know, Alan, you are out of class, you need to get back. Um, so, so the more we can utilize this technology. Um, the more impactful it will be, we can also, from a social emotional standpoint. You know, I, I firmly believe that students who aren't going to class, there's a reason, we all know that. Um, it is not just engagement, there, there are other things going on, and it's will provide us opportunities to start digging into some of that. Uh, work with social workers, with counselors, is to get to the heart of really what's going on. Um, and how can we support our students differently? It's also good data for coaches. Uh, Mr. Hamilton? Where is yours?
Thank you, Mr. Strout, so, uh, you know, again, similar to the way. Uh, the information is presented in the handbook, the, the proposed changes to the handbook for cellphone. You know, uh, we think this is a worthwhile um. Intervention, so we wanted to make sure that we partner with all the stakeholders, and we wanted to make sure that the. You know, the responsibilities of students, caregivers, teachers and administrators are clearly defined, so. You know, when you see that part of the handbook, uh, it's laid out nicely in a matrix form, so that. Uh, you know, each, each stakeholder can see, you know, what it is that. Um, if they're doing their part, then all of these pieces will work together and uh, it should provide, you know. Ample opportunities for communication for when things aren't necessarily going right, and it allows us to. You know, engage in fruitful conversations so that we can uh, make adjustments and uh, get students back on track. So, um, I, I, I won't go through all of what those are, but they're there for you to see, um, and. Uh, you can see what each, uh, each, you know, each. Uh, stakeholder has as responsibilities, um, but when. A, and, and, you know, if a student is struggling with meeting those responsibilities. Um, then, you know, there are some action steps that we want to help, uh, in the, you know, general. Uh, logical consequence realm that might help us to uh. Get students back on track and, you know, in a better space. Because the ultimate goal here and the ultimate prize is that we want students in class, and we want them there more often, uh, and uh. There's no substitute for that, so, um, if a student is, you know, uh, struggling with uh, meeting. Uh, their responsibilities and their roles uh, related to Smart Pass. Uh, a first offense uh, requires teachers and students to have a conversation. Uh, starts right there in the classroom, if this is an issue that, you know, a student is out of class. Uh, for longer than the attend, the intended time, or they're not using the Smart Pass process. Uh, properly, then um, it starts with a conversation, and hopefully it, it. It ends there and students uh, are clear about what the expectation is. Um, but that also uh, requires the teacher to uh, notify caregivers so that there can be some follow-up conversation. So again, the, 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 the communication is uh, that would, that can happen from this will. Keep everybody abreast of what's going on, uh, specific to, you know, the amount of time students are in class and then. Uh, conversely, the amount of time they're out of class. Uh, a second offense, students report the student in Smart Pass of the violation, and the teacher would. Uh, assign a teacher detention. And then a third offense, teacher reports the student violation in Smart Pass, administrator meets with students, uh, and. Um, an office detention, and then uh, either myself or Kerry LeBlanc or Mr. Strauss would also have a, uh. Have a conversation with caregivers so that we can, you know, try to, you know, make sure that the, you know, the expectations are clear and the reasons why we want. You know, we want students to adhere to this, to the procedures here, so that it translates into them spending. The, you know, appropriate amount of time in class, um, and then, you know, some additional offenses, uh, you know, and again. Uh, based on last year's experience, um, you know, Mr. Strauss already mentioned going from five passes down to three. Uh, is definitely an appropriate adjustment, um, we engaged with some students, uh, who were doing a project and. Uh, that was clearly one of their recommendations as well, uh, based on the data that they collected, uh, in serving, uh, other classmates. Um, it also allows for an opportunity for students to develop, you know, some in- increased time management skills. Uh, with having the three passes in a day versus the five. But if a student uh, is beyond that third offense level, um, teachers are reporting that. Uh, to us, they're reporting it to, in Smart Pass so that we can track the data, we're having a meeting with um. With caregivers, but uh, at that point, it can also translate into uh, loss of student privileges. Uh, and it may impact extracurricular activities such as, um, the things that Mr. Strout mentions, uh. Sports, um, theater groups, band, things like that, but. Our goal is to try to have the straight-up conversation about the importance of being in class. Uh, and hopefully, you know, after the, a first or second offense, a student is able to right the ship and, and, and. And adhere to what their roles and responsibilities are, and then the last thing I would say about this is, the. Um, the opportunities to try, you know, to, you know, collect the data and have. Open conversations that are not about, you know, judging a student anyway, it's really just about, you know, if a student. Uh, has been out of class, um, you know, for a cumulative amount, you know, thirty-five, forty, fifty minutes in a week. Uh, then it's clearly going to show up in the data and we can address that and have, you know, really great. Conversations, uh, hope, you know, with caregivers about why we feel it's important to, you know. Make the appropriate adjustments so students can uh, spend more class and time where all the good stuff is happening.
Yeah, thank you for that, any questions?
None?
I think we're pretty familiar with Smart Pass. I'd like to take these individually. So do I have a motion on the HRMS student handbook?
Okay, we've talked about the high school handbook, is that where you want the first motion, Mr. Chair?
Well, I think we've talked about them all, if I'm, if I'm correct, am I, am I wrong in that?
There are no substantive changes in the other two, right?
Correct.
That, that is correct. Alright, therefore I. Propose a motion to approve the handbooks as shown?
Can we, can we take them collectively? Okay.
So I have to restate the motion?
Nope, you were clear, thank you for that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, like to take a vote?
Eric Crane?
Yes.
Sean Doherty?
Yes.
Mike Shannon?
Yes.
Gabe Lopes?
Yes.
Josh Kepnis?
Yes.
Thank you to everyone for all the work they did on, on those handbooks, we really appreciate it. Um, let's move on to secondary performing arts student partition, participation fee. Mr. Bauer's muted.
Yep, sorry about that, um, I'd like to bring Alex Grover in, um, to talk about this and. Um, basically what has happened, um, is that. We've done a lot of work on our stipends this year with our, we had a joint uh, labor management committee. Um, and we tried ways that just to streamline all the different stipends that we have. In my discussions with uh, Mr. Grover, um, you know, there are a number of stipends that were not even listed in our, um. And, in the unit contract, um, and as we followed up more closely. We wanted to, to bring some changes here that basically shift. Uh, the fees that are affiliated with the band for these stipends that were, believe it or not, not even in the contract. So. We, we cleaned this up quite a bit, and to the recommendation of uh, Mr. Grover. We moved those stipends into um, under the schools. Where we actually went through a whole process where people would have to apply, um, and then we went through the whole hiring process, which is how it should be. Because it is a school-based activity, so we cleaned up a lot and moved them into, um. To, to actually go through the process through human resources. The second part of it is, and Mr. is going to talk about this, is that, um, a number of these stipends. Are, are, are ones that are built on participation. Meaning that if participation is not there, we're not able to fund it, and they were actually, the funding would go through, um, the band. Uh, performing arts, um, parent group, and they were funding the uh, stipends, and that's really not how it should work. So we're looking for a way to streamline the process, bring it back into the school. And also, and, and again, um, just make that shift so it's under school, um, control, so that should take pressure off our performing arts boosters. And, and just keep the process very clean, uh, we work with Pam Crummer, business manager on this as well, so I'll bring uh, aboard. Mr. Grover, and he can talk about this, and I have a slide that accompanies our request, because one of the requests is. We need to finalize against school committee approval for the actual fees for, um. For to support these stipend positions, and the school committee sets the fees, so we're not making new uh, stipend fees. We're just shifting the existing ones that have been under the performing arts. Um, boosters, we're just shifting it now to the school side, so Mr. Grover, would you mind popping in, please?
Yes, thank you so much, Superintendent Bauer. Uh, before I get started, I just wanted to highlight a couple of moments, uh. And I, that I've seen and heard in this meeting already, already, which gives some broader context for. Um, my very brief presentation, uh, Mr. Shannon, I, I really appreciated what you said. In talking about the school committee retreat and. Uh, members of the committee not necessarily being satisfied with the status quo. And that's sort of a mantra that we're taking in our performing arts department with our team as we want to. Um, move forward enhancing all aspects that we can, um, and that goes into another. Uh, element of this meeting tonight, which is the pillars of our strategic plan for the district, one of them being. School-wide systems and structures, um, and what I'm about to talk about is, you know, just a. Small piece of what we're doing in the performing arts, but it falls under that bucket. Of systems and structures, um, so that we can enhance student learning and student experiences. So, as Dr. Bauer mentioned, the bottom line with this is that, um, there are fourteen. Alternate funded stipends, um, that currently exist. Um, that need to be funded by participation fees because they're not included in the school budget. Um, so then I'll jump back up to the top, and the reason we want to implement these fees are. Threefold, and that's one equity, may collecting the fees consistent across uh, extracurricular performing arts programming. The best way for me to illustrate this is, you know, our athletic program has pretty uh. Concrete fees associated with each, you know, sports team, right? And as it exists right now in the performing arts, it would be like if in athletics, you know. Students were required to pay for winter track, but they weren't required to pay for basketball. Students were required to pay for winter track, but they weren't required to pay for basketball. You know, as it exists right now in performing arts, the only thing listed on E funds for performing arts is. Theater and they're not even specified to the different elements of theater because there's different productions for each season depending. On the school. And then the second thing is infrastructure and this goes along with a lot of other things that we're doing in the performing arts, but as it relates to these. This particular topic with uh performing arts participation fees. You know, we want our infrastructure to mirror that of athletics where, you know, students register. Um, through a platform and I've already talked to Drew Betts about using the arbiter registration, which I'm sure some of you are familiar with. Um, for students um and parents to sign up through so that they're familiar with it because a lot of uh. Our students and families is crossover from sports. Um, we're going to have a very similar landing page on the Danvers Public Schools website for the performing arts. Uh, so that all this is set in stone and it's not reliant on. Um, you know, the people that are in the positions in the performing arts, so the administrators at the schools, it's. It's reliant on the system that's in place. The reason why we're needing to do this cleanup right now is because. Through all the transition um with administration and different directors in the performing arts, whether it's, you know. In theater or band or chorus, or it's at the high school or at the middle school, or there's transition in the district office. This is like why we're in this place right now because, you know, our performing arts participation fees. Aren't treated the same way that they are in athletics where there's this great infrastructure. So that's the second piece. And then lastly is um something Dan already touched on, which is the human resources. Um, and finance office piece. So these new fees will directly subsidize fourteen alternate funded stipends through the Danvers Public Schools. That were previously paid out by boosters, whether that was through a participation fee with the boosters or. It was that the boosters wrote a check to the Danvers Public Schools to cover a certain stipend. Um, and so this is going to take all of that ambiguity and all. And. And put it into this, you know, new structure of participation fees going through the school office. And then going directly to those different stipended positions. I think that's it.
That, thank you, Mr. Grover for that. And again, these are existing fees that um have been paid, but through the boosters, we're moving it now. The school, um, and this cleanup is necessary and I appreciate the efforts of Mr. Grover. And working with the performing arts uh boosters as well. So, that's kind of where we're at. So I don't know if there's any questions because I would like to make the recommendation that we approve. Um, the fees for uh twenty-five, twenty-six for performing arts.
One quick question, one quick point. Um, are these positions filled by uh Unit A people?
And I can answer that. Some might be, some might not be, just depending on uh the similars are coaches. It's the same thing. We have some coaches that are teachers in, in Unit A and some that are, are instructional assistants. Um, same thing with this, uh, they, they might work for us as employees or they may be from the outside as well.
My point being that if that's the case, well, even if it's not the case, um, they should be memorialized in the CBA. Um, I would ask if you would have a conversation with Ms. Murphy. To, you know, see what, see, see which way we can make that happen, whether it be. Uh, you know, a memorandum of agreement now or, you know, waiting till the contract gets opened up next time, but they should be memorialized. Even although they're um, you know. Not, you know, a large amount, they should, should still get the benefit of those going towards their, their retirement benefit.
If I, if I can add to that chair, um, through our work, uh, we were able to uh actually post these positions. Uh, in fully, uh, you know, anticipating that this next step would be necessary. Um, and we've added these stipends to your point as well, uh, to the overall stipend list and they're listed as alternate funded, so yes. Uh, that was the big problem is they weren't memorialized and we've made that step. So that's a huge point and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Through you, the superintendent, um. You, you used the phrase, these are existing fees that were previously paid by the boosters. Do you mean these are, are you talking about existing stipends that are paid? By the boosters as opposed to fees? Are you referring to the fact that the boosters basically pay for the person? I don't know, guiding the flag squad, that kind of thing.
Yes, and I'm going to turn this over to Alex to be more specific, but yes, the mu- the money now will be moving. We'll be coming into the schools to distribute for those stipend payments, but Alex, if you could add to that, please?
Uh, Mr. Crane, the actually, actually the answer is both. Um, so, um. The boosters were paying um certain stipends out and in order to help fund that. You know, for a while, it was just marching band fees we paying to the boosters, but then again, in the spirit of equity, we tried to. You know, improve the infrastructure within the booster's organization, so it wasn't just marching band that was paying a fee and then, you know, I've been. You know, kind of. Waiting for this moment where there was the opportunity to do this to make everything a lot more streamlined and above board. Um, because it shouldn't be working like that when, you know. Other aspects of the school are, you know, everything gets paid through the district. Um, and so i- it's, it's both. There were, there were fees being paid to the boosters so that those. Um, positions could be funded and then there were also, you know. The, the boosters were asked because a stipend was listed as alternate funded and it wasn't in the budget, they were also asked to provide a. An amount to the school in order to balance the books.
Okay, so the students right now are paying fees, they're just paying them to the boosters versus to the school.
Correct, but. Excuse, I'm sorry, excuse me, but there's also fees listed in the, the, the school handbooks or on the school's E fund. That say high school theater, for example. Um, and again, to my first piece, it's not cons- it's not consistent. And so what we're looking to do is streamline everything here, uh, so that, you know, there's more uh consistency. And structures so that, you know, we're not in this position again.
Yeah, I think this makes perfect sense. This, this is the way we should be, you're me. The other questions I have are, is there much like with athletics, is it going to be a family match?
Yes, there will be. I've been working closely with Drew to have everything, you know, be exactly the same. Um, with Drew Betts, so, um, and same thing with um financially, that needs to go through the building principal, et cetera, et cetera.
That was my next question. So you've answered my questions. Thank you, Alex. Thank you, Dan.
I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I'd uh like to make a motion uh to approve the participation fees for the performing arts.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Sean Doherty?
Yes.
Gabe Lopes?
Yes.
Josh Kepnes?
Yes.
Eric Crane?
Yes.
Mike Shannon?
Yes. Superintendent recommends the approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six list of accounts in maximum balances.
So moved.
Second.
Do I have any discussion?
Any changes from last year, Dan?
Um, very minimal and I know Pam is on, I think Pam is still on the call.
I am.
I think she is.
Uh, the additions to the list would be the rising freshman class, ninth grade class. And also the flying onion journalism group at the high school. Um, which has been an existing group with an advisor for a period of time, but they haven't really had um a financial. Activity that has required them to be a recognized student activity for the purpose of. Call it fundraising or getting donations, selling ads, that kind of thing, and then expending anything. So, um, those are the two new ones on the list. I think that there should, there is a, a, an inactive account at the middle school. Associated with the school store. Um, that was never a, a very super active um. Account with a lot of transactions and money moving in and out. Um, there is a small balance associated with it. It has been inactive for. A period of years. The policy is if it's been inactive for three or more years that. With the consultation and approval of the, the principal of the building that we would um make that. Take that off of the list of student activity accounts and. The principal has requested, Adam Colton, he has requested that that um balance be transferred into the general subfund. I do not have that number in front of me. It's on the order of two hundred and fifty dollars or something like that, but. Um, I apologize. I, we can do that part at the next meeting if I can't put that number in front of me.
That's okay.
Quick enough way, but.
Anything else? Take a vote.
Gabe Lopes?
Yes.
Sean Doherty?
Yes.
Eric Crane?
Yes.
Mike Shannon?
Yes.
Josh Kepnes?
Yes.
Salta bus contract recommendation.
Yes, sir. Um, our recommendation is. In the contract with Salter, we have a window that if we need to make any changes in terms of routes and. The amount of buses we have up until April, uh, excuse me, August fifteenth. So I'm just asking for school committee approval to reduce the number of buses we lease from Salter from ten to nine. Uh, the reason for that is that we have obtained every year, we've been able to add to our fleet. So we have an extra bus through um, through the town warrant. We were able to hire a bus driver for this. Um. So, we anticipate fifty-three thousand dollars uh savings if this is approved, so. Um, all we need is a simple approval from the school committee to do this and then we'll notify Salter. And reduce the uh leasing of buses from ten to nine. And thank you to Pam Crum and David Polsa for further work on this.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve uh going from ten buses to nine.
Second.
Any discussion? Any further discussion?
Quick question, we can, we have the ability, if mid-year we decide we need to go back to ten, we can uh. We can do that, Dan, or is this call, is this limited for the year?
Well, if, if we would run into that problem per se, I mean, there have been times when if one of our active buses is out of order. We've had, we've had to order a bus to fill that need, so we have that capability of doing that.
Okay.
Nothing else, let's have the vote.
Mike Shannon?
Yes.
Eric Crane?
Yes.
Sean Doherty?
Yes.
Josh Kepnes?
Yes.
Gabe Lopes?
Yes.
Consent agenda, motion to approve the out-of-state field trips, fundraising, donation to Riverside and homeschool applications.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, take the vote.
Eric Crane?
Yes.
Mike Shannon?
Yes.
Sean Doherty?
Yes.
Josh Kepnes?
Yes.
Gabe Lopes?
Yes.
Any communications? Probably not many right now. None. Anything from legislation? They don't, they don't work during the summer, do they?
Oh, wow. Um, on the federal level, on July twenty-fifth, the uh. Federal government released one billion or unfroze, I guess is the way to put it, one billion. Dollars in education funding. What that will mean for Massachusetts or for us is unclear at the moment, but that's good news.
And are there any subcommittee updates? Not much going on in the subcommittees right now, right? We have our first one coming up in September and that's the policy. Alright, well, I thank you all for being here. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that emotion.
Take the vote.
Mike Shannon?
Yes.
Eric Crane?
Yes.
Sean Doherty?
Sir.
Josh Kepnes?
Yes.
Gabe Lopes?
Yes.
Thank you all for being here and good night, Danvers.